We're ready to start. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us this evening. My name is Malley Rosado, and I'm the Council President for the Court of Common Council, and I'm calling to order this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, November 10th, 2022, to order. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Tenet Association of Avalon, Maple, who some other members are here with us, sitting here in the public. I want to acknowledge my council colleagues who are joining us through our hybrid mode, Councilman Josh Mixtum, Councilwoman Tiana Hercules, Assistant Majority Leader, Councilwoman Rosetti. Councilman, Majority Leader Clark will be joining us shortly. To my left, I have Councilman John Gale, and to my right, I have Councilman Nick LeGuebrun. For members of the public, this meeting is broadcasted through HartfordPublicAccessTV.org, Channel 96 Comcast, Channel 6032 Frontier, our Facebook page. First this evening on our agenda is a resolution from Mayor Broning confirming the appointment of Sharice Snipes to the position of Chief Innovation Officer of the Metro Hartford Innovation Services, which is also known as MHIS. And I am delighted to have Mrs. Snipes in front of council for her appointment this evening, which is well deserved. And so I've been working with Sharice for the past four years, and I have to say that you are amazing. Thank you for staying with us and not building out in the city of Hartford, for leading us through the pandemic, for leading the broadband free Wi-Fi for our Hartford citizens, and for carrying us through the major cyber attack that we had. When I say major cyber attack, it was because it involved the City of Hartford and the Board of Ed, and you got us through that. You have gotten us through so much these past two years. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the service to the City of Hartford. And so with that, I am going to turn the floor over to you so that you can address this council body with a brief statement, and then I'll open up the floor to my council colleagues. You have the floor. Yes, can we pull her volume a little bit up, Michael? Thank you.
Good evening, Council President and members of the City Council. It is an honor for me to be here tonight with you all. Serving as the interim Chief Innovation Officer has been fulfilling, challenging, and rewarding.
Oh, Sharice, can you press the button? Is there a button there?
Is this better? Okay.
Yes. Now you're on. Yes. Sorry, I should have said to press the button. Go ahead.
I'll start over. Good evening, Council President and members of the City Council. It is an honor for me to be here tonight with you all. Serving as the interim Chief Innovation Officer has been fulfilling, challenging, and rewarding. I have served the students, citizens, and employees of Hartford for 15 years, and I look forward to serving them for many more. I was born and raised in Hartford and attended Hartford Public Schools. My family, both maternal and paternal, live in Hartford. I was raised by my mother, my aunt, and my great aunts. My mother, though a single parent, was a strong and independent person who taught me a series of life, important life lessons. The most memorable life lessons was never to forget where you came from and treat others and treat everyone with respect, something I still practice to this day. My mother shaped me into the woman I am today, and I will forever be grateful for her love. That love helped me to be a perseverant, independent, hardworking, and courageous individual. I grew up in the north end of Hartford in a community where everyone knew each other, where lifelong friendships were established, where families looked out for one another, even during the most challenging times. My teachers, who lived in the neighborhood, played a vital role in my success. They never let me settle for anything less. They saw my potential. They saw things I could not see myself. During my childhood, I spent most of my time outdoors, whether it be with neighbors, friends, or family partaking in various neighborhood activities. My most memorable childhood was spent at Camp Current in the summer, the Artist Collective, Neighborhood Rec Centers, playing on the city's youth soccer team at Martin Luther King, playing kickball, crack top, double dutch, and fishing in Kenny Park Pond. I was also pretty active with the people in my community. I formed bonds with priests in my neighborhood who provided guidance when I needed it most. They answered my many questions about life, attended my soccer games, and supported my school fundraisers. I remember when I was so determined to climb on the roof of John C. Clark School, I kept trying and trying. When I finally made it onto the roof, I looked out into the neighborhood and dreamed. I knew one day I would do something great. At the time, I was just not sure what it was. I've had a love for technology ever since I got my first Atari computer when I was nine years old. That love for technology became my passion, which motivated me to establish the career I have today. I landed my first technology job here in Hartford after graduating from Capital Community College, where I obtained a Associate's Degree in Computer Information Technology. I continued my education at the University of Massachusetts, where I obtained a Bachelor's Degree in Information Technology and a Master's Degree in Information Technology and Cybersecurity. I hold a variety of technical and professional certifications, including one for security infrastructure, power rescue, and project management safe practitioner. As the interim CIO, I coordinated the city in Hartford Public Schools' data center relocation from Constitution Plaza to Jennings Road, resulting in an annual expense saving of 1.2 million, secured $3.2 million in federal E-rate funding to upgrade the internet network and wireless infrastructure in the schools, partnered with city departments in the redesign of the city's new website, spearheaded remote work and distant learning initiatives for both the City of Hartford and Hartford Schools during the pandemic. Hartford is a city that I will forever treasure and hold dear to my heart. I will always call this city my home, and I will forever stay invested in the community that helped raise me. It is a city filled with life, opportunity, inspiration. I am proud to be a product of Hartford and a Hartford success story. Thank you for your time. I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And so I am going to, let's see here, Councilwoman Rosetti, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I can't tell you how much this means to me. I can't tell you how much it means to see someone who loves their job, loves our city, your story of growing up in the city that, you know, I grew up in also. This is the kind of thing you'd like to think could happen more. So as someone who had to deal with technology pretty quickly remotely during this pandemic, I thank you for that. We were, you know, changing out laptops and figuring out how to do it. And a year ago, actually, November 8th, because I wrote it down, we had our first tie-bread meeting, but just all the things we were able to do in such a short period of time. I am so pleased you're before us. I am so pleased that we're going to move forward, and it really just means so much to me. So thank you. I don't have a question. Your body of work speaks for itself. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rosati.
Councilman Mixtum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Ms. Snipes. I also, I share Councilwoman Rosetti's sentiments about your story and your dedication. Excited to have you here. I do have a question, which is what do you see as the big, the biggest next thing that you want to see MHIS take on in terms of improving how city government runs? Like, what's job one?
I would say one vision is for the city to have its own fiber network. I think that's crucial in this day and time when a lot of residents don't have access to high-speed internet, as well as small businesses. So I think that right there would help the city get to a place that they can be more, I guess, I don't want to say competitive, but offer more to residents than we can now.
Thanks. That's all I got. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilman Mixtum.
Majority Leader Clark.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Sharice, I have no questions for you. I've worked with you for a while now, and you are to be commended for hanging in there. I believe that you are probably one of the longest-serving people in an interim role that I am aware of in the City of Hartford. So thank you for hanging in there with us, and, you know, your core values speak strongly regarding the Department, two departments, really, because since MHIS is split between the city and the Board of Ed, and because you are a, you've been raised, born and raised in the city, grew up in the city, you understand and have a heart for Hartford, its residents, staff. So thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing working with you and you bringing more creative and innovative ideas to our city so that we can be thoroughly prepared in this 21st century.
Thank you, Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Councilman LeBrun, you have the floor.
John Oliver Clark, huh?
Yep.
Clark School. You mentioned Atari, so we have to talk about that, because I loved Atari. That was my favorite system.
Yep.
But more importantly, I think, and on a serious note, I think it's pertinent or of the utmost importance to talk about the leader that you are and the leader that you have been. First, I think, to run a citywide infrastructure through two large bureaucracies of close to 2,000 employees, that being the City of Hartford and the Board of Education, you don't see that, and it takes a unique talent to be able to do that with the staffing that you have, right? And what that means is, is that your staff understand the importance of the mission and the goal, and so they look beyond the bandwidth that is presented in front of them and overcome those challenges, and that's the earmarks of a great leader. The second thing I'll say is that through the pandemic, you led us through the storm, both in hardware and then connectivity. Your efforts and your team efforts, right? Because it's a team.
Yeah.
Was able to put laptops in all of our scholars' hands, so that way we didn't miss a beat. And I believe Hartford was the first city in the entire state to put laptops in kids' hands. So I want to applaud you for that, and I think that that should be noted. But that's also being reactive. The other thing, too, is during cyber attacks on the first day of school at the Board of Ed, it was the first day of school, and we had a cyber attack, and the kid, and our scholars were in school the next day. So I'm sure on a daily basis, you have accomplishments, but to me, you are a hero.
Thank you.
And not all heroes wear capes. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Councilman LeBrun.
Thank you, Councilman. So again, thank you for your passion, for your leadership. And now the chair will entertain a motion.
If I may, Madam-
Yes, I apologize, John Gale. You have the floor, Councilman Gale.
I can't be, I would be remiss if I didn't add my own comments here. And typically, I would tell you this, I would ask you this question, but I won't ask you the question, but I'll tell you what the question would be, which is, you know, which high school did you graduate from in Hartford? Because as everybody knows, I'm a Hartford Public High School graduate, so, you know, I'm always, I'm always looking to see whether I, I need to, you know, say, that's all right, you're a beaver, you know, we'll, we can get by. But anyway, we'll pass that one for the moment. I just want to add to what, what, all the kudos that have been given to you tonight for all the great work that you've been done. And then on a personal note, just to add that, you know, I've been a council member now for seven years here in the City of Hartford, and there's been times when I need technology, and bam, the response has always been quick, efficient, and spot on, and, you know, so anecdotally, from my perspective, it's a, it's a very well-run, very efficient department.
Thank you.
So greatly appreciate that. And now I will do the council president's bidding and-
I would just like to quickly add, my mother graduated from Hartford High, so.
You did?
My mother.
Your mother?
Yes.
All right. Go Owls. Councilman LeBrun will tell you we got a Turkey Day football game coming up between, is it with Weaver?
It's with Weaver, yes. It's back on, the Turkey Day game is back on.
Back on, but at Hartford Public-
At Hartford Public High School.
But I digress.
All right. I make a motion to send this back to council favorably.
And I will second that.
Motion has been made and properly second. I'll say aye by accepting this resolution to go back with a favorable recommendation.
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? The ayes have the floor. This resolution will be going back with a favorable recommendation. Thank you. Sharice, and congratulations.
I am honored. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item 2.2. It is a resolution presented by Council President Rosado, Majority Leader Thomas Clark, Assistant Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman James Sanchez, Councilman Nick LeBrun, Councilman John Gale, Councilman Josh Mixtum, and Councilwoman Tiana Hercules. And it is a resolution on housing conditions, and today we have Department of Development here with us. We have Director I. Charles presenting. And I'll let him introduce his team. So Director Charles, you have a PowerPoint resolution that you will be presenting to us today, correct?
I'm chair. We will be making the presentation to address many of the issues in the resolution before us.
So on this resolution, and I'll, and I'll read the resolution, it states, whereas the primary responsibility of the government of the City of Hartford is the health and safety and welfare of Hartford residents, and whereas housing is a basic need and landlords have a basic obligation to ensure that the housing is safe, well-maintained, and adequate, and whereas the City of Hartford must use every measure possible to hold landlords accountable for meeting that basic responsibility, and whereas no one in Hartford should live in housing which is unsafe, unhealthy, and unsanitary, and yet too many Hartford residents continue to live in such standard housing, and whereas the City of Hartford has increased the number of housing inspectors and has established a residential licensing program in order to hold landlords accountable, but more must still be done, and whereas funds have been allocated for community safety and wellness through ARPA funding and various funding sources, as set forth in this current fiscal year budget, and whereas it is the intent of the City of Hartford to take an aggressive and proactive approach in addressing substandard properties for residents living in the mentioned conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Court of Common Council and the mayor shall develop an action plan to address ongoing housing issues, and that development of such plans shall include consideration of all potential measures to combat housing that is unsafe, including but not limited to the following: aggressively hiring code inspectors using funding already allocated and working together to increase the number of housing inspectors in the upcoming budget; two, identifying funding sources for paying for emergency repairs on occupied residential properties, and identifying methods for recovering such cost of remediation from property owners; three, engaging community partners where possible to leverage city dollars; and four, expanding the tools available to the city to remedy unacceptable conditions, including, for example, seeking to place properties with persistent unaddressed violations and receivership. And that is our resolution that is before us, and now I yield the floor to you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. Let me begin by saying, we will be making the presentation today, and if I describe the presentation to you, it's an example of who we are, what we do, the tools we use to get there, and also in the presentation, next steps in order to deal with many of the issues you have suggested. We fully agree with the intent and the thrust and the concerns that many tenants have expressed to us. We hear, we hear their concerns, and I have said to staff on numerous occasions, we have to figure out, figure out how we can be more nimble, more flexible, and be more effective. A young mom who may have problems with infestation, she doesn't want to hear about our tools and how we're trying. She wants her infestation problems to go away. If someone may not have heat on in their building, they don't want to hear about how hot we're working. They want their problems to go away, and it's our job to ensure that that happens. So my hope is, as we go through this presentation and we explain all the tools, all the things, everything we're doing, and then we talk about next step, it'll be hopefully clearer to many members of the council and many members of the public as to what we intend to do to make this situation better. We have a commitment, as you indicated, to improve the quality of life for every single person in the city. No one should have to live in substandard housing, and we make every effort, working with the landlord and working with tools we have at our disposal, to see that those things do not occur. But needless to say, things sometimes fall into crack, and we don't do as much as we should, and when you look at the next steps, we're trying to find ways to be more effective, be more focused, and to solve these problems quickly. Judith Rothschild, who's our director of blight remediation, housing code enforcement, and rental license program, will be making the bulk of the presentation, and I'll be closing on next steps, and then we'll be more than willing to take any questions you may have of us, any concerns you may have that the presentation may be lacking. But let me assure you all that we're ready and willing to listen, and ready and willing to do as much as we can to improve the quality of life for every single person in this city. With that, I'll let Judith make her presentation.
Good evening, Madam President Rosado, also Councilman LeBrun, Councilman Gale, and also councilpersons that are with us via the internet. I'm pleased to present to you really what the Division of Housing and Blight Remediation and Rental Licensing is, is doing for the City of Hartford now, followed by Mr. Matthews' next steps. The City of Hartford Code Enforcement is, first of all, broader than Housing Code Enforcement. I know that the city is aware and the citizens are aware of several divisions of the city, but I, in this particular slide, I just want to point out that there are several very necessary, effective, and interrelated agencies that make housing safe. Those include, of course, our Police Department, also DDS's, Building and Trades- Those include, of course, our Police Department, also DDS's Building and Trades for our building inspectors, Housing Code Enforcement, Blight Remediation, our Rental Licensing Program, and other departments, Health and Human Services, our Zoning Division within DDS, our Fire Department, Marshal's Office, Fire Marshal's Office, and also a coordination of departments which we have dubbed the Problem Properties Working Group. Tonight's presentation is concentrating on those in this slide that are highlighted in yellow, and we will be speaking as to those divisions particularly. First onto Housing Code Enforcement, some information for you and for the public, the current staffing levels. We have one director, that's yours truly, of Housing Code Enforcement, also Blight Remediation and Rental Licensing, as I. Charles mentioned. In, within the Housing Division, we have one chief. We have 11 code inspectors presently allocated. Eight are fully active. Two have been recently hired and are presently going through training within the department. One is in open position. We completed interviews for today and expect to extend an offer on shortly. We have one administrative assistant assigned to Housing Code Enforcement for the entire team. Recent changes in coordination of that team, we have presently a five division of the city of Hartford. When we have eight inspectors active, which we do now, our intention is to increase the divisions to eight. And when we have 11, to increase an additional team, which we will call Rapid Response or Rapid Action Team. So we have smaller areas for inspectors to manage. That will result in better enforcement, quicker response, better follow-up by the inspectors throughout the city with a smaller area to cover. And the three additional inspectors will be called upon for those cases that require more help, more urgent help, more intervention, more association with outside agencies for assistance on complex cases, and the like. This will improve our coordination and our results for faster elimination of violations and the conditions I. Charles and the tenants in our community have spoken to us of. In comparison to other cities, we have about the same amount of inspectors as New Haven. New Haven currently has positions for 14 housing inspectors. They are, have, they are of the 14 open on two positions, one a regular housing inspector level and one what they call a senior housing inspector level. They have 12 active. Bridgeport only has four inspectors that cover housing. They also, the same four, cover blight and lead inspections for the city as that Health Department includes housing inspection within the same department. New Britton has four housing inspectors. They also, at least one of them, also does health inspections. And Waterbury, similar to Bridgeport, has a Health Department which is inclusive of housing inspectors, and they have five or six housing inspectors within their Health Department team. We have a lot of cases that are referred to the Housing Enforcement Team, the Housing Inspectors. Most of them come from our own 311 call center. Citizens call in or email in or contact them and complain about a situation within their, their residence or within their community. The 311 call center then disperses that call, and that complaint is addressed by the appropriate city agency. Housing Code gets a number of complaints from that, primarily from that center. We also get a lot of referrals from other Hartford departments and teams. We are coordinated within the DDS with other department divisions and also outside the city DDS department with all of the other departments. When we see something that one agency doesn't handle directly, it's referred to the one that does. That's common in our work. The Housing Division also, the inspectors are required to do inspections as part of the Rental Licensing Program. So we are conducting those inspections, more on that in a few. And we get requests from the Fair Rent Commission to do Housing Code inspections as part of a fair rent complaint lodged by a, a tenant to that commission. We also get a lot of public complaints directly. People who call us, walk in, speak to us, speak to us while we're out on the street conducting inspections and such, which we always address once received. And our inspectors are out in the field daily, hourly, after-hours for emergencies, always with eyes wide open. If they see something, they don't wait for a complaint. That is added to our list of things that need to be addressed. Once a complaint comes in, just quickly, very important, but quickly, the, the process after a complaint is, is lodged is that a case is opened in our system. The Housing Code Inspector assigned to that area where the complaint is from within the city is assigned, and it is the duty of the Housing Code Inspector to then contact the complainant. Usually it's a tenant within 48 hours of receipt of the complaint to the inspector to schedule an inspection as soon as they can arrange that with the complainant. If it is an emergency, that contact has to be within one hour of the complaint receipt. Things like no heat and such would be responded to in that way. Once the inspection is scheduled, it is conducted. Access by the tenant is required, so we have to coordinate that. And if we cannot coordinate that, even after the complaint's received from the tenant, we will make further attempts to communicate to get that lined up. At least two have to be made by the inspector, and if that's unsuccessful, then we send a letter requesting that they contact us so that we can arrange that inspection and conduct it. Once we get into the property, if we do not find violations, which is once in a while, then we close the case. But if we do find violations, then normally unless the landlord can correct it promptly, and we can have proof of that promptly, we will issue a notice of violation to the responsible party, usually the owner of the property, not the tenant, for correction of the problem. The Hartford Municipal Code dictates the timeframes on these orders, and it states that it has to be 21 to 60 days from the order for correction of it, unless it is a dangerous condition, in which case it can be five days or less. Once the time is expired on the order after service on the, on the notice, a reinspection must be conducted so that we know whether or not it's been complied with. If it is complied with, the case can be closed. However, if it's not, then the case can be pursued. Once in a while, and this isn't uncommon really, the landlord needs an extension of time for various reasons. If it's good cause, for example, they cannot get access into the unit themselves, or they cannot get the required labor or the required funds to do the necessary repairs. If there's not an emergency or imminent danger involved with the case, an extension may be granted by the department, but no, for no more than 60 days. Progress is monitored by the inspector throughout, and if the progress is not good, or if it's not within the timeframe, or if no work is done, then the case is going into enforcement. And enforcement includes, under our Municipal Code, citation is issued to the owner. The citation notifies them that they are subject to $100 per day per violation outstanding at the time of the reinspection, up to $7,500 maximum per violation. If not paid, we lean the property. And in addition to these remedies, we may refer the case to the Office of the State's Attorney for prosecution under the Municipal Code and general statutes. Persons who receive an order do have rights of appeal. If those are made, then those are honored rights taken through the hearing process. Some numbers for you, this is from January of this year, 2022, through November 3rd, just last week. The number of cases that were created from the various sources that I've mentioned are 2,554 cases, just to Housing Code Enforcement. Of those cases, we conducted 6220, 6,220 inspections, including reinspections on the same cases as required, as necessary, and those reinspections resulted in a compliance rate of 87% or 2,213 cases closed due to that. However, not every case gets into compliance. We do have cases that remain open at this point, 341 cases as of last week. And those are in review for further compliance by the inspectors if they're in process or they're in the process of going through enforcement. Note, please, that of those so far this year, 43 citations have been issued with fines in the amount of $188,900. Issuance of fines is a deterrent factor. It is something that we use in order to get landlords to comply with necessary outstanding violations, and it does work. What you see on this slide is some, some examples of how well it works. The city of Hartford has, in many occasions, taken properties in the, the enforcement process and ended up in a case where we have significant fines and liens against the property. Some of those properties have resulted in tax deed sales, because there's also taxes due to the city on many of these properties, and some have resulted in a foreclosure which ends up titled with the city of Hartford. 647 Garden was actually a blight lien, a very large one, and a large tax lien, which ended up at a tax deed sale. A good developer purchased this property and took advantage of some other programs also run through DDS, a blight lien forbearance program, where they were entitled to a forbearance of the lien amount in exchange for an agreed correction of the home within a certain time period by written agreement. They renovated the property, and they also took advantage of a tax deferral program which allowed them to have a reduced tax penalty for up to 10 years. This is a wonderful program, allowing an incremental rise of the taxes normally due at only 20% a year after five years. The first five years are actually non-taxed, and then from year five to 10, only 20% increments are due, increasing. What's also good about this program is a good developer can take this property, enjoy these benefits in city programs, and still sell the property and transfer that benefit to a new purchaser. Other properties here, Earl Street, and also others, Charlotte, Mather, these are now in the hands of the land bank after the city has taken title from the previous owner who had the property in blighted condition. Quick mention on Mather Street, this was a very hot spot for criminal narcotic activity in the street, long complained of by the neighborhood residents. The city of Hartford DDS, in coordination with the Problem Properties Group and other departments, managed to get this property under control. The truck which you see on the left-hand side of the red structure is the beginning of the structure on the right. This property was being occupied illegally by a person who was residing there and was involved, we believe, with the criminal activity in the area for a long, long time. That property is now back under control and boarded up and in the hands of the land bank. All great stories, but due to time, I'm going to move on to rental licensing. Staffing-wise, we have one program supervisor and an administrative assistant who's shared with Blight Remediation, so it's half-time administrative assistant. This program, as you know, as it was adopted by council and is part of our Municipal Code, is a very full program which requires to get a license compliance with several of our municipal codes and state law codes. Planning and zoning, reviews for it being a legal premises, housing for housing code conditions, blight for the conditions of blight in and outside of the property, primarily in the exterior, fire marshal checks, fire safety, Building and Trades, Building Code, and the owner must give us a report that the units in the building that are occupied or may be occupied by children aged six or younger are led safe. This is a large program, and because of it has been phased in incrementally. We are presently covering rooming houses, hotels, and buildings with 10 or more housing units. At this point, we have 221 building applications filed. Only 11 rental licenses have been issued so far. However, we have all of those other applications going through the process presently. Those applications that have been filed incompletely are going, are being noticed to complete the application process. We're working with owners who are working with us, but those who did not apply at all have received formal notices of violation that they must file within 21 days or face further penalties pursuant to Hartford Municipal Code. 406 of those notices were sent last week. Rental license is not an option, it's a requirement with penalties if the owners of the property within the program do not obtain that license as required. The tools that we use include late filing fee of $1,000 extra on top of the program license fee, and a, a Housing Code fine of $100 which can be applied per unit, per day of non-licensing, once formal notice has been sent, which was last week as to the units that have not filed that should have by now. In addition, buildings failing inspection can be denied a license altogether if they do not correct. We require the corrections, and in extreme cases where conditions are not satisfactory for occupancy, there can be an order to vacate the premises. Our preference is compliance always. The goal is safety for the people who need to reside in these houses. We work with landlords, we work with tenants to get to that goal. Our Blight Remediation Team is active on the street daily, enforcing the Blight Remediation, the anti-blite and property maintenance code. It consists staffing-wise of a blight officer, enforcement officer, one senior project manager, three full blight inspectors who are also building inspector twos, which is very, very good for our particular blight work and also for the assistance of our blight, excuse me, our Building and Trades Division, which is presently down a few inspectors, so they, they assist them. And we have an administrative assistant part-time assigned to this unit. Numbers-wise, they have conducted 1,323 inspections since January. They have issued 63 notices of violation, 34 citations, and after hearing, because of the procedure requiring a finding by a hearing officer, they have had $646,500 of fines assessed for failure to comply with by blight orders. In addition, the blight team is responsible for initiating foreclosures on blighted properties, and they have done so with 54 structures so far this year. Problem Properties Working Group is not a new group. It is a group that was created a few years ago and is still in progress of trying to address the, shall I say, the, the most challenging, the most in need of correction properties brought to the attention of the city officials in our city. It's led by DDS along with the Office of the Mayor. It's comprised also of Hartford Police Department, Health and Human Services, Fire Department, Public Works, and we have invited in the Office of the State's Attorney to our meetings as well. We meet monthly. We focus on properties that have been identified particularly with crime, high crime, or with multiple safety violations or a combination of the two. We hold violators responsible. We take direct and decisive action, and we. We take direct and decisive action, and we use our resources in a very coordinated way and aggressive way. We have had some very successful work so far this year, particularly with pop-up parties and also with some very tough properties that have been turned around according to residents and particularly through police reports because of direct intervention, meetings with owners, extensive site visits, orders, and follow-up on these properties. We have, in the past, primarily focused on criminal activity and permissible uses. We now intend to focus the Problem Properties Working Group more aggressively on housing We recognize, excuse me, that we have had some difficulty in showing the public all of this work and getting the public access to the current status of their cases, to the level of response on their complaints. We are in the process, and this is interesting right after the appointment of Sharice on the last item, but we are in the process and it's well underway of customizing Excela software for housing enforcement as well. Currently, our record-keeping is on the old EnterGov system for housing code. It's outdated, it's cumbersome on the inspectors trying to make reports into the system and then making them available to the public is another challenge. This will be improved, and the expected date for this, as well as the ability of the public to hold us accountable and see us in our work more transparently, is for spring of 2023. Hi, Charles.
Thank you. Two more slides, and then obviously we'll be happy to take your questions. I want to make sure it's clear to all council folks and everyone watching online that this presentation is not the end-all, be-all. We fully understand that despite what you may see, despite the numbers, we fully understand we need to do better. We need to find ways to do better. And what I'm going to try to talk to about is some next steps that we think we can put in place. It won't be everything we'll do six months from now, but we think these next steps will help us begin to solve some of the problems that we're still experiencing. Let me just go through them very quickly and be prepared to take your question. First, as you talk about next step, A, work with city leaders, NRZs, which are the neighborhood groups, and other housing stakeholders to identify problem properties. We think through all of our efforts, through all of our inspections, through 3-1-1 calls, that we're fully identifying problem properties, but that may not be the case. We have to figure out who else out there in the neighborhoods who may be housing advocates can identify properties that may not come our way and we may not be aware of. For example, we had some very good meetings, attended some very good meetings that was put together by the President of the Council and others, and we met with a number of housing code advocates, tenant union. I have said to staff, in this city for every reason, we have some folks who may not want to talk to the city, may not want to talk to the government, and what we have to figure out, if we can develop relationship, for example, with some of the tenant unions where we have regular meetings, I'm not sure what regular mean at this time, where they may identify some properties that they may have heard about and we may not have heard about. We try to do the best we can, but we have to figure out how we can open up the lines of communications to get more information. We may be, we may think we're doing a great job, but if that's not perceived by the public as such, then we have a problem. So what we're going to try to do with A and B is bring as many people as we can into our process so we can find out more and more what we can do differently. C, explore the feasibility of repair fund to use upon owner's failure to timely correct health or safety violations. Now, you may know this becomes a problem. On occasions, we may have a property owner who, who, who may or may not have the capacity to repair his property. The question becomes, what can we then do? And we're exploring the feasibility of putting together, designing a program with some funding resources behind it that will have the city step in and repair that property and then lien that property or place the amount of dollars that we use to repair the property in that person's tax payment. That's another way we can encourage property owners to repair their property if, in fact, they know that the city may step in and lien that property in the effort to solve these problems a lot quicker. D, explore the feasibility of online twos, the confirmed status of housing code violations. This goes to the whole issue of allowing the public to have access to what we do. You may know, we're in the process of transitioning from EnterGov to Excela software system. In that process of transition, transitioning, we lost the ability for many external residents to take a look at what we're doing and how we're doing it in order to see where their violations may, in fact, lie on their properties. The idea here is to put together a dashboard of some type. Now, I'm not a techie, but I'm told, once we put together that dashboard, if you have a complaint in DDS or with the city, you can look at that dashboard and figure out where your complaint is in the process. It's kind of like when you, many of us buy something from Amazon. They'll send us a tracking number, and then for the rest of time, while we're waiting for that package to arrive at our doorstep, we can look online and see just where that package is. What we want to do with Sharice, who you just met and just sent her appointment to council, we want to work with her to put together a dashboard to make things more visible to residents and also, quite honestly, hold us more accountable. Hold us more accountable in what we're doing and how quickly we're solving issues that citizens may, in fact, have.
Forgive me, Madam President and Director Matthews, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I have to work in five minutes, and I wonder if I could jump in before you're quite done, Director, to just ask a question on that point. And Madam President, if you'll allow.
Councilman Mixtum, if you could please allow Director Charles to finish his presentation, please. I do understand-
Well, the point is, I'm going to leave in five minutes.
I understand, but, I mean, you're interrupting a presentation from our administration.
Well, you'll miss out on my questions. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Director Charles.
I'll, I'll, I'll move very quickly and then take questions.
Okay.
Number E is to amend the city ordinance to deal with the Fair Rent Commission. Many of the tenants who we spoke to indicated that the Fair Rent Commission has, has a number of issues. One issue is they appear to have a backlog of cases. We discovered that one of the reasons the backlog exists is because many of their meetings had to be canceled because some members could not attend the meeting. So what we're going to try to do is amend the ordinance to have alternates. So if a permanent member could not attend the meeting, we can go right down the list and invite an alternate to attend, and we can continue to move the Fair Rent Commission along, and folks won't have to wait. The other issue is, we're going to try to extend the time of the commissioners to do their work from maybe six to eight to maybe five to nine to clean up the backlog. Because it's important, if you're a tenant and you have an issue associated with your rent, that that issue be dealt with very quickly. So we're going to try to amend, send you amendment to the ordinance to do that. Let me move quickly, take your questions. Promote accessibility for Spanish-speaking residents. We heard through a number of meetings with the tenants that many of our applications may not be translated into Spanish. We're making, we're going to do a deep dive and ensure that everything associated with our application process, any forms that have to be filled out, any applications that have to be filled out are all translated into Spanish. We heard that loud and clear. It's important in a city where we have a lot of Spanish-speaking folk to make sure they can take advantage of the process and file their complaint in a timely fashion. We also, number G, is to consider using home funds and housing preservation funds to assist with the rehabilitation of substandard units. Right now, some of you know, we get home funds from HUD. We also get housing preservation loan funds from HUD, and we're going to try to develop and design a plan so if a unit is substandard, we can figure out how, in fact, we can use federal monies to help that unit come up the code. H, explore the feasibility of enhancing sources, resources to assist tenants with problem-identified, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. That's the relocation. Number H is basically, as you know, when there's a fire or there's an event at a particular property, we relocate, relocate people to motels, to hotels, while their units are being fixed. Often times, we have discovered there's some issues associated with that relocation. Sometimes people leave those units with nothing but the clothes on their backs. Other times, they leave those units and they have no, no funds for transportation, we have no ways to transport them, they have no food money sometimes. We have to take a look at the whole relocation process to make sure, we might have to increase some benefits to make sure that these folks have the means they need to go to a motel or hotel to solve some of the issues that are coming up. I continue to increase the housing code inspector staffing. Many of you have said to us, said to me over the last couple of years that we do need more staffing, more housing code inspectors, and, and the mayor has been engaged in conversations with council leadership and others, and I'm sure during the budget process, we'll be looking very carefully at ways to increase the housing code inspectors in order to do a more effective job of trying to resolve many of our issues. And I believe the final one, let me put my glasses on. This has to do with a point made in your resolution. Right now, as we understand it, the Department of Housing for the State of Connecticut, they have a revolving loan fund that we're, we're still trying to find out whether that loan fund is funded, and the idea is to think about putting some properties where we have owners who cannot or will not repair their properties. The idea is to put those properties in receivership and have the state or the court appoint a receiver and have that receiver make the repairs, collect the rents, and manage those properties. That's something that we're looking at very seriously as an attempt to deal with those owners who will not or cannot comply, to be more aggressive with those owners. I'll stop there. I'm sorry I ran very quickly. I was sensitive to the fact that some council members may, in fact, want to pose some questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Director Charles. Councilman Mixtum?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have to run this screen, since I did put in my, in the chat, three questions to the Director. So hopefully someone else will do me the service of asking them, and I will, I will watch the videotape later. Thank you, Director Matthews.
Thank you, Councilman. We will make sure that we do ask the questions. Would you be able, Judith, to close the presentation so that I can see the screen? Thank you.
How are you, Director?
How are you, Councilman?
I'm well. Thank you for joining us today out of your busy schedule.
It's my pleasure.
Yes, and thank you. Judith, is it? Okay. So, um, the, there is the creation of a rapid action team, right? And there was a term by, I believe, that was recent. How recent was this rapid action team formed?
We, we've been working on it for some time, but frankly, although we had allocations for new housing code inspectors, we've gone through the process of trying to fill those positions. For a long time, we only had five housing code inspectors. Now that we're up to 11, as you heard from Judith's present-
Hold on one second, Director. We're good now? Okay, all right.
As you heard from Judith's presentation, our intent is to divide the city up into eight grids, I call them grids, and each inspector will be assigned a grid. It's kind of like community policing. The idea is that inspector will know his grid. He will know everyone in that grid, he'll know the property owners, he'll know the property managers, he'll walk the street, hopefully, and if, in fact, he runs into a problem at maybe a 40-unit apartment, the idea then is to take the Rapid Action Force and send the Rapid Action Force in to deal with those major problems he may have at a 40-unit apartment, and that inspector can continue working his grid because the Rapid Action folks will take care of it. For those of you, I know Councilman Sanchez in the Marine Corps, is a concept we use in the Corps all the time, where Rapid Action Forces give, suppress fire when a squad is under heavy fire. So if our inspector is under heavy fire in a particular grid because he has a lot of cases, he may need some help or she may need some help. We have female inspectors also, and we'll send the Rapid Action Team into that area, clean the whole issue up, and then reassign them someplace else. That's the idea behind it, to be more proactive.
I love it. I love the idea. I love innovation. So, has it started? Is it, when are we planning to launch this Rapid Action Team?
Well, I, I think we're ready to go now. You agree?
We are, we are ready to go as soon as the two inspectors that are finishing training are, are ready. I mean, we just had two councilmen that have started in the last couple of weeks, so we don't put anybody on the street till they have been trained, and so we have eight fully active right now, two that are in training. As soon as those two are in training, then we can go to Rapid Action. But we already do it within the eight team. If somebody needs help, if there's a tough situation, we reassign as needed. We just will have those extra three for that particular use probably in the next 30 to 60 days, and that will be a great change. And the eight grid goes into effect this month, sir.
Wonderful.
And, and if I might, I would just say this. If, in fact, I'm not sure if the future holds, but if, in fact, we get some additional housing code inspectors, our intent would be to divide the city up into 10 grids. It'll be a little bit smaller, but 10 grids, and now every inspector will be responsible, 10 inspectors would be responsible for a smaller area, but we'll still have the Rapid Action Force to help nevertheless.
Thank you. I love that innovation. I love that approach. Can't wait to see and get reports back on that. So in terms of grids, my mother had taught me that pictures are worth a thousand words. And the pictures that we utilize, I would say, using the grid methodology that you guys mentioned, were all in the northeast section. And so as a resident of the northeast section for close to two decades, what, is, is that a microcosm of something larger?
I'm not sure I fully understand. The grid system would be citywide.
No, no, I'm talking about the pictures that were used in this PowerPoint. They were on Charlotte Street, they were all in the northeast, Westland Street, they were all in the northeast section. So is that a microcosm of something larger?
I don't think so, sir. I, I will, Weathersfield Avenue, for example, was just hit with compliance on Friday. That's behind the Dollar Store where there was an encampment, where there was significant drug activity, prostitution activity, you may be aware.
Yes.
And that was the effort of the- And that was the effort of the Problem Properties Working Group. We brought the Dollar Store forward, had meetings with them, gave them demands for a cleanup, a big cleanup, which was conducted just last week. So, and there are other properties we've hit hard in, in the South End, on Bond Street, on other streets. So it's not, it's just a, shall, I'll take the blame that I should have spread the pictures out throughout the city. Because we are all over where the problem properties are, we are. So I can send you more pictures if you want.
No, no, no. I, I just wanted to just make sure because that was the, you know, you know, I live near those residences and so it was just something that, okay, is this, is this? And going back to the grid system, would, would you, would you say that the, the amount of enforcement is to spread evenly throughout the city? Or when I think about community policing, right? Or using that model, I'm using, I'm using your model. So, or your analogy in that there may be some areas that don't need as much attention and, as others. And would the possibility of using this grid system and this rapid action team within that model, would we be able to double up or triple up in certain areas?
Yeah. I mean, it, it will be somewhat based on population, the number of property units in the particular grid. But obviously, we're rolling this out as we speak. So if in fact, as we go through this process, we determine that one inspector is not terribly busy for whatever reason, then we may want to think about how we may use his or her ability or skill sets a little better. But we'll be able to tell you a lot more next year this time after we go through a process. And I might add very quickly, we have also adopted a year ago a very aggressive foreclosure program. We have both outside council and inside council identifying properties and foreclosing on those properties. And also, we're very aggressive with our tax deed sale. Our intent is to bring properties back to useful benefit to the city and/or give city residents an opportunity to purchase those properties. If you talk to all the folks in the neighborhood, they will tell you they're very concerned about blight, and so are we. And that leads to all kinds of issues, infestation, everything else. So we're trying to be very aggressive with, with seizing those properties to our foreclosure if in fact the landlord or a property owner is not willing to take care of those properties. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Absolutely. So in the working group, I think it's called the Problem Working Group, right? And so I counted eight different entities. I did not see DPW involved in that. And why I say that is, is that oftentimes, a clear indication from the community or when constituents call me is a red flag would be the trash outside. But I don't see them a part of the working group. Can we rationalize why that is?
Good. They are.
They are, sir. Mike Looney comes to the meetings usually himself. We coordinate very closely on a day-to-day basis between the blight team, HHS, and DPW on trash issues, also rodent activity, because we have shared obligation in the city. Housing usually takes interior to buildings. Health takes exterior to occupied buildings. Of course, DPW takes city property responsibility and we coordinate together, but they are very much at the table.
Wonderful, wonderful. And who, so five out of the eight divisions that are there belong to DDS in that working group. Would it be safe to say that for all intents and purposes, you guys are the quarterback of that working group?
Yes.
Great.
Judith is.
All right. In regards to the data system, I know we're going to go to Exela. Is Exela going to be exclusively used for the blight remediation or will it be a citywide data, is it part of a citywide data rollout? Or will it be specifically used for your situations?
Again, I'm not a techie, but I believe it's in a number of different, I know Public Works and Health Department will be using it. In DDS, we have it in LNI, License and Inspection. We have it in Planning. Economic Development, we're still struggling because so much of what they do can't be quantified very easily. It's definitely in blight and it's definitely in housing code enforcement. We think that the, the dashboard that we put together and the Exela system we put together will make it easier for all of the housing code inspectors to download their data right into the system. And we as managers and others will be easily, will be, it'll be a lot easier for, easier for us to manage their reinspection, manage whatever NOVs may be there. So the whole thing, when you have 13 to 14 inspectors, is to ensure that they're all doing their job fully. So far, they are working hard, but we need to be able to verify that when you call and say, what's going on on Bond Street. We need to be able to, as the mayor would say, push a button and have data shoot out. And we're hopeful that the Exela system will give us that, but not just us. Many folks, as you know, who are, who are housing code advocate, they also want the ability to get data and know just what's going on. And we want to be very, very transparent. We have nothing to hide. If we're dropping the ball, the sooner we know about that, the better we can solve it before they come see you.
Absolutely. And through you, Madam Chair, just one statement, I'll wrap up. As it pertains, what brought us here is the resolution that was spearheaded by leadership and council president. And thank you for doing this. And I want to acknowledge the folks that are here. We heard you and we took a response to this. This resolution was in a direct response to your voice. I'll wrap up my comments with this, and it's three things. I think that when we roll out data, what we, when we, when we, when you guys come back to present on this resolution, and I believe it to be a working document, that we take into consideration three things. The first thing is, is that the rolling out of data, that there be an operational or advisory team on the data. I believe that there are a lot of hands-on and a lot of people that have passion towards this and intelligence toward this. We want to be able to do this in a concise way, in a coordinated way. Oftentimes, with the rollout of any database or any data systems, it's, it's left to the people that are, have the expertise in the, in the, in the data itself, but not the user interface. So I would recommend advisory groups involved in that. Two things in particular, as it rolls out to the database, is number one, how are we closing the cases? What is the categorization around closure? What does closure mean? Is it fully healed? Is it going to come back again? Or what, what does that mean? I also think about the contacting, contacting property owners. Having that as a database, I can see property owners not being accessible. And this is a problem in particular with emergency situations. So we need to look at the landlords in a way where they need to make sure that they continue to update us with their most recent information, considering we're in this technology phase. But also, as a department, we are progressive in, in getting that contact information on a quarterly, regular basis and putting in this database. Because God forbid, something happened and we needed to contact someone right away. I just, it'll be hard to try to find someone. And continue to quarterback this effort. It needs to have someone beating the drum. It needs a coordinated effort. And lastly, please, continue to utilize the community's voice. And why I say that is, we talk about changes to the ordinance, and I think it's called the Fair Grant Commission?
Yeah.
Is it? Yes. What happens with a lot of these commissions and a lot of these committees? And what we found over time is that there's a certain archetype, right? You have to have the availability. You, you, you know, you, you can't have children in, in the room. It's during dinnertime. So oftentimes, the voices that we get there aren't the accurate voices that it's affecting. So we need to make concerted efforts to make sure that the voices that we're, that we're receiving are the consumers that it's going to directly affect or the constituents that it's going to directly affect. And we need to make sure that we have that, that population involved in the, in the conversation. And oftentimes, and I've heard from my Spanish-speaking constituents, they are consistently taken advantage of from landlords because of this inability with language. And so there is also a burgeoning Portuguese population. So, you know, just those things for consideration. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Councilman LeBron. Councilman Gale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, both of you, for the wonderful presentation and bringing us up to speed. I want to, a couple of comments, and I think some of my questions will take into account the questions that Councilman Mixtum also was concerned with. But I want to pick up on the, one of the last things that Councilman LeBron said, and that is to take note of the people that are sitting here tonight, the housing, I'll call them housing advocates, that have come out to raise concerns. And a much larger group was here at Public Comment last month. And as I recall, that group was commenting very specifically about landlords. And there was actually a very common thread because I believe that a vast majority of the folks that were commenting, were commenting on one single landlord that was identified as Avalon. And my understanding was that many of the properties that were mentioned as problem properties were all owned by the same group. And I'm just wondering to what extent this Avalon group has come to your radar and what, what the relationship is at this point in time between the department and, and this Avalon group.
We're very familiar with the Avalon group. I can tell you, Councilman Gale, that we, we have been notified and confirmed with Land Records that a great deal of the portfolio previously managed by Avalon has been transferred. The owner of the property is not Avalon, that's a management company. The owner of the property previously of this portfolio, very large portfolio, which includes a lot of the properties that have been brought to the attention of the council and to us through this advocacy effort by the tenants in those buildings, have been transferred to a new, a new owner. Michael Cohen was the owner of the previous portfolio, still owns 51, sorry, 105 Sherbrooke. But the bulk of the rest of them that have been a subject of concern, 887 Asylum, 3031 Gillette, that's 30, and 31 Gillette, 84 Forest and others, do not belong to Mr. Cohen's entity anymore. New ownership, new management, Maple Management has taken over. Our experience is different with the new owner and management company, although a lot of the complaints that have been brought to the council's attention from those properties continue. So we have taken a great focus on the properties brought to our attention still by the tenants in this room and outside of this room in regards to property. And we continue to pursue any property, including Sherbrooke, still owned by or Mr. Cohen's group or managed by Avalon Properties. So we're aware and we are putting extra attention on these properties, given the level of ongoing complaints.
If I may, I just want to say this. Many of you guys know, I'm kind of an old-school guy, but I have been, and I'm fearful that things may be, despite our efforts, despite the presentation we made, things may be falling in the cracks for whatever reason. Folks don't want to talk to the government, they don't want to talk to the city. So I'm going to make a real effort, and I believe they will too, to reach out to the team of the tenant organizers, the tenant union. I mean, from what I can tell, there's probably six or seven of them around the city. And I think if they're willing, I want to try to develop a process where we meet once a quarter, once every couple of months, just talk things through. What can we do better? What are we missing? What do you think we ought to do differently? I think that'll help my staff, help us do better, help serve the, the needs of the citizens. And they have passion. They have commitment. I want to try to bring them to the table. Your whole thing about community, reach out to community, I think they can be a great vehicle, working with us along with other tenants of like-minded folks. We can have a meeting in City Hall, we can have a meeting in Function Room. We want to do the very best job we can. And if they're willing to come to the table along with other tenants to talk to us on a bi-monthly basis, talk about what we can do better, I think that's the way to go, to keep this ball moving and keep this momentum moving. Because we never want a situation where a young mom or anyone else will feel they're living in substandard conditions and no one cares. I don't want that to happen on my watch.
And I, I certainly appreciate those comments. And you've obviously heard loud and clear that council is very concerned. And I think my own suggestion back to, to council will be that we set up our own schedule for asking you back here on a regular basis to get an update as to, okay, this is where we were on November 10th. Maybe we ask for it on a six-month basis or a quarterly basis. Come back and tell us, you know, okay, here's the groups, here's how, here's to your comment, here's the groups we've been able to connect with, and here's what we've been able to do in the last several months. And we'll talk about that internally as to how we go about that. The, I, I love the idea of the dashboard that you talk about. And I, I, what I'm not clear about is whether parts of this are already in use with other departments. Do we already have the ability with some of our departments to track the application? For instance, if you're going to making a zoning application to, to track your application and its review, and then each step by accessing that online?
Yeah. I'm told the technology exists and, and we're going to make a, a major effort to take advantage of the existing technology so anyone in, in, in the neighborhoods can track what they do. We still have to design it, but I'm told the technology is there.
I, I can assure you the technology exists because the town of West Hartford has it.
Okay.
And, and it is, it is quite good. If I want to know what's going on with the building permit in the town of West Hartford, I can, I can dial it up. You can see when the owner or the contractor made the application. You can see the inspector it was assigned to. You can see the first inspection that goes out, what the results are, and it tracks it right through to, to completion. So again, maybe when we ask you to come back, we'll get an update as to the progress that's been made on that dashboard system. But that would be, I think, a wonderful-
Just, just for the record, you know, of course, that we have 13 neighborhoods and we go to all the NRZ meetings, we go to all the merchants' associations' meetings, we, we go to all kinds of meetings. I just want to put that on the table. Another meeting, I'm excited.
And I certainly know you do because I see you there. And we certainly appreciate that. The, bear with me a second here. The rental licensing program, I want to just talk about that for a quick second. The, you know, I see that a total of 11 rental licenses have been issued. I, I think we're in the second year of the program at this point where the second tier of, of apartments are supposed to get licensed. And, and the year runs with our fiscal year, so it started July 1 and it'll run to June 30th. And I, I'm wondering, at this point in time, whether you have any ability to predict whether you're on track to actually get all of those apartments licensed, all the ones that are supposed to be licensed by June 30th next year, if you're on track with the current amount of staff? And I guess I'm sort of asking this by way of, of starting to think about budgeting issues. Do you have sufficient staffing to do that by next year, as near as you can tell at this point?
You want me to answer?
Well, we're going to be in discussions with the administration on, on, on staffing needs. You're right about the rental license program. You're right about the rental license program. The first year of operation, we dealt with 40-plus housing units. And then as of July of this year, we went from 40-plus to units from 10 to 39-plus, or 39. And if you can see from the notices of violation we sent out, over 400, I would say candidly, there's some resistance, some resistance. And we're going to begin to find folks that try to move them along. One of the reasons, one of the things we encountered in year one is, in order to have a rental license, people need to have a LED safe certification. And believe it or not, we had tremendous problem trying to find folks who could declare their building was LED safe. So they could not complete the application. We have now solved the issue of building being LED safe. But I think it's still fair to say that some property owners are in, I wouldn't say in resistance, but they have not yet stepped up to the plate. So do you send notices to all of them? They're going to be fined $1,000 plus $100 a day, and we're going to keep coming at them until they fulfill their requirements on their rental license program.
Well, brings up my next question, if I may, Madam Chair. There was a couple of times during the presentation, you mentioned the number of fines that you've issued, and I'm wondering, how much are we collecting? So one of the, one of your statistics here was 43 citations were issued and $180,000 in fines were assessed. What's our experience in our collection rate for that amount of fines?
On the housing code numbers, Councilwoman Gale, it's been upon transfer of property when those liens get paid, not until there's a transfer, because until then, it's just assessed and leaned against the property. Most property owners don't pay out until the property's going to be sold and then it is resolved. So I think we've taken in just under $30,000 this year so far, and some of those were actually on properties transferred in the group that we were just discussing previously managed by Avalon.
You also mentioned that there are times when a case can be referred to the state's attorney's office. And I know, I'm just wondering, in the last 12 months, how many cases have we actually referred to the state's attorney's office?
We have, we referred just one in the last 12 months. One of the slowdowns was the state statute that allowed the blight cases to be referred to the state's attorney as a summonsable complaint. 7-148O was amended by the state legislature last session, so to eliminate the summonsability of that violation to directly to court. It's now an infraction scheduled under Central Infractions Bureau. So we can't refer the blight cases to the prosecutor anymore. The housing cases, the council saw fit to, on mayor's request, amend the city ordinance to enable a referral to the criminal prosecutor for violation of the housing code that wasn't part of the municipal code before its amendment in February. We've also had discussions with the state's attorney regarding whether we could bring a Citation Avenue penalty and ask for referral to the prosecution prosecutor's office simultaneously. And they see it as a double jeopardy issue, if we did both at the same time. So we have been exercising some discretion in pursuing the Citation Avenue, so that we could get compliance as effectively as we could see fit. We do, I do have an arrest warrant application ready for a property right now. I'd rather not disclose on the public record, because it's not signed by anyone yet, but we are proceeding on a very serious problem property within the city this week to the state's attorney's office. And I'll add, we have had discussions with the Hartford state's attorney, Charmise Walcott, regarding reinitiation of nuisance abatement cases, which has to be brought by her office for properties that require some strong change in circumstance that we cannot gain through our code enforcement tools, as many as there may be, for taking over the property under court orders through that action. So we are working closely with the state's attorney's office, the community court office of the state's attorney, and the housing court office of the state's attorney.
The case that you're about to refer, is that property occupied?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rosetti, you have the floor?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. You know, my comments are kind of a double-edged sword. You know, certainly I want to thank Director Matthews, I want to thank Director Rothschild for the presentation, but I want to talk about urgency. I want to talk about being a city that's known, instead of problem properties, that administrations that go after people, when I hear that, and I, and you know, I'm not saying this to be critical, but in statements, and there were a lot of statements tonight, you know, "We're beginning to do this," or "We're thinking about this." You know what? And it's easy for me to say, because, you know, Director Rothschild, I know you're an expert on this, but sometimes we need to throw some of that out the window and just go for it. I'm, you know, of an age where I remember when community court was put into action and why. You know, I am fairly certain that Hartford state's attorney Walcott would be a bigger ally if pushed more. I didn't know, and maybe this is my fault, you know? I didn't know we had a problem property, problem property working group. I would have liked to have thought, the minute we had the residents, the wonderful residents came down to make us aware of the atrocities that are happening, and I know there's more, that someone would have said to me or others, "Hey, you know, we have this kind of mechanism," or "We're doing this." And I know we're doing it now, but there's an urgency here. There's an urgency here that we need to not do it like we did it. And I just, you know, I'm glad there's an arrest warrant. I wish there were more arrest warrants. And this is something we need to be more communicative with each other, you know, share this information. I'm glad we do it here, but, you know, pick up the phone, tell us, tell us what we can do. I'll call, I'll call State's Attorney Walcott. I mean, these are the things, there's things, everybody here has a niche, everyone here has a niche, but also, I can only be utilized with what I know I can do. So, you know, as I said, it's a double-edged sword, and those are my comments. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you and Director Matthews, thank you very much for your presentation tonight, and also to Ms. Rothschild. I just wanted to, for us to highlight the, within the resolution, and I don't remember if Director Matthews had touched upon it, the, I think it was, is the last resolve clause in the resolution? And I'm bear with you, I'm trying to bring it up. I'm not sure if somebody has it.
I can read it, Councilman Clark. It says, "Expanding the tools available to the city to remedy unacceptable conditions, including, for example, seeking to place properties with persistent unaddressed violations and receivership."
Yes, that one, I just want us to, and we're probably going to have additional conversations about this, because I don't think that this resolution is ready for us to vote on as a full body, but for us to think about that receivership idea, and I think also too, one of the resolve clauses had to deal with making funds available for properties that need to be fixed. We just need to, as we, we just need to be cautious about the things that potentially want to policy, because it's already been stated that some of these things, that we may not want to open up this type of policy.
Councilman Clark? Councilman Clark, you're not coming in clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Clark, you're not coming in clear?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, not really.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'll just email everybody, okay? Okay, I'll just email everybody, okay?
I don't know if you said you were going to put it in an email, we couldn't hear you. He did, okay, thank you.
I might, I might say, Madam Chair, the idea of receivership is one suggestion that was made by you and others, but also the idea, I might add, of placing a lien on properties and/or if the property owner is unable or unwilling to, in fact, repair a substandard building, a building with violations, we would step in after a reasonable amount of time and make those repairs, get the building where it should be in terms of a non-code, non-code violation, and then lien the property. So we're going to look at both those options, the receivership, and the mayor may have said to many of you, we're trying to find that pot of money that we can draw down to make repairs if and when necessary.
Thank you. And I'm pretty sure Councilman Clark will send over an email. So a couple of questions. Enlighten me, Ms. Director Charles, and thank you both for your presentation. So I believe three weeks ago, Dave, right, we, the mayor and I, and Senator from 401, and we toured 105 Sherbrooke. And some of the things that we saw were just terrible. And, you know, it's 8:38, and we have some of the residents that were there, some of the residents that two weeks later met us. And I look at all of them here, and it breaks my heart, because I think we would all want to be home, where we feel good going to our units, and unfortunately, these residents here don't. And so my first question is, I have Dave, who uses a cane, who lives at 105 Sherbrooke Street, who cannot go up the stairs with his groceries, who has to pay someone to bring his groceries upstairs, who the elevator in this building is not working. So my question to you is, does the city of Hartford have an inspector that can go out and look at that elevator and report back what is wrong with it? Because I would love for David, for the holidays, to be able to bring his groceries up in the elevator.
Madam President, we have been out, we have received information regarding the elevator for some time, was under a work order, we have issued orders, they have appealed them. That's not a necessary stay to our enforceability of the matter, so we are pursuing the matter with enforcement. That's another possible referral to the state's attorney. As far as the city taking on the repair of the elevator, we can discuss that further, but we have been out and we have issued enforcement against the owners for this and other violations remaining at Sherbrooke.
Okay, so enlighten me and bear with me here. So our inspector has gone out there because of the complaint, or has someone physically said this elevator needs X, Y, and Z to be able to be repaired?
It was a complaint previous to our meeting with the tenants in this council this evening and others. It was ongoing, and it was followed up on as a result of our meeting again, and it is presently in status of, so it was before, it still is after, and is still being pursued. It's not excused, and some elevator repairs are difficult to manage, we understand that, but this is a longstanding outage that is not acceptable to us either. They do have a right of appeal, they have appealed. Blight orders have also been issued on the property by our blight remediation team. I know HPD's been out there regarding the trespassing complaints and conditions in the hallway caused by persons who should not be in the hallways for those purposes. We are pursuing those avenues. I feel very badly for Dave and others that are experiencing these conditions in Sherbrooke, and we are following up and will continue to use all available tools to do that. The owners are in communication with us on a daily basis. It's still not done, that's still not good enough, we understand that, and we'll keep going as much as possible to resolve these things.
Okay, so did I hear you that you stated that you issued a violation, and they did what?
They appealed the order.
Okay, which, me, I know they appealed the order, could you elaborate on?
They, well, they appealed the order, they have a right to appeal, they don't have to give an extensive explanation of the basis of their appeal, but when we issued the NOV, which is the notice of violation, which went to the owner, it goes to Michael Cohen as principal of the entity owner, not to Avalon as managing company. They appealed the order, and then it gets addressed by a hearing officer after scheduling. Both sides are heard, and we can ask at that point for the assessment of fines at $100 per day per violation that we have cited, if the hearing officer finds in our favor. So it's in that status right now, as far as the order goes.
So based on your experience, would you say this could be a six months, a year, or?
For the hearing?
Yes.
My understanding is it's within weeks that the matter would be scheduled. And it's also my understanding that there is no automatic stay of the enforceability of the order. So we can still pursue a referral for prosecution to the state's attorney's office, for example, which we can do.
Okay. And going to the slide where you have the HCE case, cases from January 1st through November 3rd, the 341 cases that are opened. Would you say that the majority of the complaints are from Avalon and Maple?
I would be speculating. I'm not, I'm not able to give you a good answer on that. I would say if they were previously owned by Michael Cohen's entity, managed by Avalon, and have since transferred, those would have resulted in orders going to the new owner once we get notified, which we did, that those properties have transferred to a new owner. They're not enforceable against the previous owner. If the violations were outstanding, the remaining violations were ordered to the new entity or new owner. So I doubt it. I doubt it. As to those, although some of the citations were issued to Mr. Cohen's entity, and also some of the fines that were issued and collected were from his properties.
Okay.
Can I add one thing, please? Mr. Cohen doesn't live in the state. Getting jurisdiction over a person who lives outside of Connecticut by the state's attorney's office is a challenge for them. He could be issued a summons to appear in court, but if he fails to appear, requiring that he bring his person into the state of Connecticut technically would require an order of extradition, which is up to a judge. And that's part of the reason why pursuing Mr. Cohen has been challenging for us, too. We issue orders directly to him, he accepts them, but service on a criminal court level would be a higher burden.
So my question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was a fire at 105 Sherbrooke Street, and half of the building is under construction, and they're building beautiful units. So obviously, the city of Hartford has to issue them a permit to operate. Would the city of Hartford, could the city of Hartford take a stand to say, until the building is fixed, there are no more permits to fix this building?
I'm not a licensed building official, but my understanding of the building code is that the building code official is somewhat restricted from denying a permit on a basis outside of the condition which is being requested to be permitted for construction. It could be, however, a condition of the rental license. These properties do fall within the rental licensing program, and they have been notified that they're late and that they will be assessed $1,000. They have responded and requested an extension, which has been denied to them, and they are in the process of producing... in the process of producing information to us. Through the rental license program, they can be instructed as to any condition which affects habitability of any unit within that structure, and that is what we're doing right now.
Just a quick point. One of the issues we run into in the elevator case, when they appeal to the point made by Councilwoman Rosetti, we could be extremely aggressive and say that the elevator, the non-performance of the elevator is a health and safety issue. Therefore, we're going to condemn the building, and that means we have to vacate. And then you have a whole host of problems when you vacate a building filled with people. And that's always what we're faced with, is the violation serious enough, and the landlord or property owner not cooperate in such a fashion that we have to take an aggressive approach? And normally, the only thing we, the only approach we can take to be extremely aggressive is determine whether there's something in our code for us to say, this is a serious violation, a health and safety violation, we're going to vacate this building. And that means we put people up in motels and hotels, we disrupt their lives. So we have that issue about being overly aggressive sometimes, because the only tool that may be left to us to really get the landlord's attention is to vacate that whole building. But by that, we also disrupt the lives of all the tenants. You know, we try to balance this out sometimes, but the elevator problem is just disheartening to me. If you're in a multifamily building and the elevator is not working, that's a real problem. And as Judith said, we tried to get, make something happen there, we cited it, he appealed. And now we have to go through that whole appeal process, because as I say, the staff sometimes, we still live in America, and folks still have due process, both landlords and tenants, and we can't grab the landlord and shoot him outside the building. We got to figure out a way to deal with those landlords. And maybe finding our own resources, fixing the elevator, and then leaning the property is the way to go.
I would like to have further discussion with you on that, I Charles.
I'm sorry.
I said, I would like to have further discussion with you on that. I just can't come to terms where we have an absent landlord, where we can't bring him to the state of Connecticut, to face all of these challenges, but yet we can continue as a city, issue permits. I have a problem with that. Because what they're doing is they're ignoring these residents, they're building beautiful units, and they're renting him out for double the amount of what they're paying. It's still under the same address, 105 Sherbrooke Street. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I just think, and through you, Madam President, so just in summary, you know, what I would add is, is that this can be a database, right? Trying to be solution-focused with the exceller. Well, Council President, and maybe, and with the expertise, is how do we, by using this database, how do we gather the information and utilize it in a way that benefits the constituents? Because this is a dichotomy that is hard to digest. So anyway, that's just a database suggestion. The other thing, what I would recommend, or if you can, email us out of the 341 outstanding, is who are the frequent hitters, who the frequent flyers, right? What is that percentage breakdown? Because that will allow us at council to really, you know, see who, because the people are talking through these complaints, and it'll allow us to have transparency into, you know, who continues to have these problem situations. And what it also does for us is leverage us, right? If someone is one of those frequent flyers, and they come before us asking to develop for abatement, for those type of things, we have the leverage, right? But we are in the unknown, and so let us partner with you, as Councilwoman Rosetti said, let us allow us to leverage our authority and our power and be partners in this process.
Just quickly for the record, we also do a deep dive, and before we bring any, anything to this council for the consideration of any benefit to any property owner, we ensure that it don't have code violations, that not what you may call a bad actor.
Okay.
We're not going to send a bad actor here. If he's messing around with other, on other issues and not taking care of his properties, we do squat for him.
No, I hear you.
Just so you know, yeah.
No, I understand, but sometimes the word "bad actor" has subjectivity involved in it. So Director, in partnership with your department, I feel that this document should be a working document, this resolution should be a working resolution, where all of us as a community partner on this. And so why I say that is that we need to have continued courageous conversations on these things. What would be feasible in your department's mind, maybe for you, Director, and Director Rothschild, as timelines and timetables, how frequently can you come back to us that is feasible, where we can get updates on this resolution? Would, I may throw some dates out, would January 1st, I know it's only a month away, or six weeks away, February 1st, April 1st, you know, when would be an accurate timeline that we can afford you guys the opportunity to come back and report on all of these things that we're going to be putting into progress?
Just for clarification, is it your thought that we would come back to a call meeting, or we would go to PEDH and make periodic reports, every two months, every month, or something of that nature?
I mean, the way that I look at it, Director, is call meeting, PEDH meeting is their committee meeting, so it's the opportunity for you to come and report back. I'm just curious to say, like, what makes the distinction for you? Because, again, in the spirit of partnership.
Only reason I mention the committee meetings is that they are on a regular schedule, as opposed to a call meeting that appears to be a special call meeting of some sort. So I just wanted to see if we can get staff in a position where I can say to staff, every other PEDH meeting, we're going to go and make a presentation on our status of how we're doing with rental license, how we're doing with blight, and so forth. I'm thinking that way, because you're on the schedule already, and because, quite honestly, we have so many different projects, I need to keep staff on the schedule too, so I need to let them know that no matter what you're doing, at the second PEDH meeting, you're going to make a presentation, on the fourth one, you're going to make a presentation. I'm open to suggestions, I'm thinking that as first impression.
Thank you, Director.
I don't know what you think of that.
So I'd like to make an amendment to this resolution, and by adding a date of reporting back to the PEDH committee every other month on this resolution, commencing on Jan, in the January PEDH meeting.
That's fine, we'll do that.
I'll second that amendment.
duly noted. Before we continue, Councilman Assistant Majority Leader Clark, did you have a comment or a question? I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, um, yes, thank you, um, here we go. Can you hear me properly?
No.
Can you hear me properly? I don't understand what's going on, and hopefully you can hear me, understand.
Now it's a little better, now it's a little better.
I think the proper way to do it. You still can't hear me clearly?
Not clearly, but we can at least understand you.
Okay, I think the proper way to do this is for DDS to go before the EAG. I don't think that amendment is what Council LeBron was trying to do.
I'm sorry, Councilman, we cannot understand you. Councilman Clark, if you, well, I ran out of battery, but if you can put it in a chat or text it to Councilman LeBron, we can make an amendment if that's what you're trying to do.
Just for the record in the community, I'm looking at my phone to see the response from Councilman Clark.
Ready?
I'm wait, uh, Councilman, Majority Leader Clark says update to PEDH.
Okay, wonderful. So we have a friendly amendment on the floor. Councilman Gill, if you could read that amendment again?
I believe the amendment, I believe the amendment is to add another, a last resolved clause to the resolution that the Department of Development, Department of Development Services report on a, on an every other month basis to the Planning, Economic Development and Housing Committee of City Council, commencing with their meeting in January of 2023, with an update as to actions taken and progress made with respect to this issue.
And that's?
I second the motion.
So a motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye on the friendly amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful.
Just for clarity, Madam Chair, I'm assuming, unless I'm wrong, we can satisfy our obligation and requirement by giving a full report on what's going on in the blight program, the rental license program, the housing code enforcement program, and the bad actors we have kind of pulled in to do better. We can satisfy that requirement?
Yes, it would, Director, but just to be more prescriptive, to allow a framework, there is, in the resolve clause, there's four items. So, yes, I think all of the things that you're talking about address the four items, but just to be succinct and provide clarity, that would be the guideline that we would be anticipating.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be happy to do that.
So that would be the five resolves, because we just added one.
Yes, the five resolve, thank you.
Yeah, and I would add, you know, among other things, we talked, you talked about the next steps, so some of those next steps are obviously things that you're not currently doing, but might potentially look at. So I think council would then expect at these periodic reports to hear what progress has been made on looking at this in some different way. In particular, I just mentioned again, the receivership concept, we've had a lot of discussion on this Sherbrooke Avenue property as to how to get the attention of the landlord. I know from my years of practice, I've seen many times over the years where the gas company and the electric company file receivership applications in the Superior Court when a forty-unit apartment building is not paying their electric bill. And the court gives them a receivership, they immediately collect the rents, they pay themselves off, and they turn the building back to the owner. And boy, that gets the owner's attention when they lose those rents. And so I would love to see us explore the ability, you know, leaning the property, which has been mentioned, it's a tool, but it's not an immediate tool. As I think was said earlier, many times these liens are only paid when they sell the building, which could be ten years from now. But boy, if you take the rents, they look up immediately. So I'd love to see some progress along those lines. Having said that.
Yes, so we have to vote on the resolution now, we voted on the amendment, and we have to vote on the resolution.
So I move to send it back, send this resolution as amended back.
Favorably.
With a favorable recommendation.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly second to send back this resolution as amended to council. I'll signify by saying aye, if you agree with this, aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions, any nays, the ayes have it, this resolution will be sent back to council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you for that wonderful presentation, and we look forward to.
One final comment.
Yes.
You may, for those of you who had the opportunity to read the Affordable Housing Plan, not connected to this at all, but many of these items we talked about, we had discussed either directly or indirectly in the Affordable Housing Plan, but that was a five-year effort over a period of five years. For the record, what we plan to do is move these next steps a lot quicker. Our goal is, over the next two to six months, is to have a lot of these things completed, so we can move a lot quicker and be a lot more aggressive, because as I said earlier, that young mom that got infestation problem, she don't want to hear about all that, she wants her problem solved today, right away. So we're going to try to put these things in effect as quickly as we can, and whatever else that may be offered from our housing advocate friends or from the council, given your conversation with your constituents, we're prepared to take a look at and try to incorporate as quickly as we can to make the quality of life of people in this city a lot better.
Thank you, Director Charles, and thank you, Director Rothschild. I really, this council body appreciates all your hard work. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.